...of the mayor of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead will be fixed at the first annual meeting of the village board trustees after the mayor is sworn in. So the mayor is sworn in after he gets elected. And so after he gets elected, then the salary will be determined. And the annual compensation of the trustees will be fixed at the first annual meeting of the board of trustees after the mayor is sworn in. So the trustees, two trustees, are all sworn in at the same time as the mayor. So those two trustees will not know what their salary is until the annual meeting, which is after the election.
They know what the salary is from the previous year. And they still chose to run, right? For public office and to serve the community. So what's your, what's your why?
Right. Well, to me, this doesn't make any sense at all. I don't know why people in the community might not be aware of this. But when you run for office, you think the salary is going to be X. And then you come to the annual meeting and they can change your salary to Y or Z.
Ms. Garrett, you're gonna have to move to Hempstead, run for office and challenge it. I don't know what to say. To say, to say to this community, you don't think the people know what it means.
They don't.
It's actually, it's, it's very clear. When you run for office after the mayor is sworn in, he fixes the salaries at the annual meetings as he does every single year. The two trustees that are sworn in and off here, the salary was fixed after that annual meeting, once the mayor is sworn in.
But they can change it.
No. Once the mayor is sworn in, it is set for the next four years.
Why is the salary going to be? It sounds to me like you can change the salary at the annual meeting after you get elected. No? Is that what it says?
Yes. He could lower it, or he could, or he could raise it.
Right. So he could run for office thinking you're going to get a hundred and thirty thousand and you become the mayor and the board decides that your salary should be twenty-five thousand.
If the board decides that, then that's what they decide. But they can do that for any employee that doesn't have a contract.
Keep in mind that when the election is in April, so you're still in the fiscal year, that prior fiscal year, the mayor's salary and the trustee's salaries have already been budgeted for and voted on prior to that point. So they do know what the salary is for that stub period until the next budgetary year. So what you're saying is not correct.
I disagree because it says, "At annual meeting..."
You mean disagree, but it doesn't mean you're right.
I'm saying, you know, what it says here is that they can change the salary after you get elected. You don't care?
How much you pay, Mayor? For the record, I would like to state that I make at least half of the other person's money.
Why?
There's a limitation to how much you can earn because of age. As we're doctors. And we walk, as one of these aisles, stop into that safe arm on arm. That will all, no longer impacts me, but it still affects it.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Potts?
Yes.
Trustee Rantrow?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We saw that out of accommodation, the first person present in the chair. The board trustees here by way of agreeing with the leaders of the building meeting, who are meeting across American and set them across the middle.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Potts?
Yes.
Trustee Rantrow?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan, then you made a retro approach considering his vice of emergency application asking you. Now, we need to get presentations on the building report. We start with recreation and arts commission.
Chairperson, Mr. Henry, good evening. I will make sure that we just move on.
Your nominations.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Board of Trustees, everyone.
Good evening.
The human relations council, yeah, they're very busy. The Village of Hempstead held the annual tire recovery, five day race, the health fair and the community there did bring part. Proceeds from the race will be distributed to four graduating seniors from Hempstead High School. We're going to make that presentation on August 5th at the board meeting, six thirty. I'd like to thank the Department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation for all of their help with the events. They were instrumental in them being a success. The human relations council held this monthly meeting and attendance was Burnett Willett, Ruby Sat, Marilyn Vallejo, Gladys Rodriguez, Rosalind Seetal, Terry Banks, Richard Barker, Christie Reynolds and myself. The council discussed their prospective assignments for all of the upcoming events. Saturday, June 15th, the Village of Hempstead alone with Jackson Memorial A and E, Julie Sandall. We celebrated the second annual Juneteenth celebration with singing, dance and poetry, spoken word, refreshments. We even had a description of Harriet Tubman. Great time was had by all. Friday, June 1st, I met Sylvia Silver in regards to the Village of Hempstead collaborating with Long Island Transportation Alliance to sponsor the annual bike parade. The goal of the bike parade is to promote greater forms of transportation as well as shed light on people becoming more mobile. That event shall take place in September. Friday, June 21st, I attended the census 2020 complete count committee meeting. The presentation that was presented with all of the committees, they just discussed how crucial it is that they get an accurate count for the 2020 census. And I'm happy to say that as of today, the citizenship, citizenship question will not be on the census. Thursday, June 25th, the Village of Hempstead held this annual Caribbean American Heritage Program. We recognized local residents for their commitment to the village. We also highlighted the Reddy Van Genroot, everyone who was in attendance except number two. And cap trustees, but I'm sure we all had a wonderful time, didn't we? And I'd just like to highlight the fishing trip hosting July 20th. For anyone ages 11 to 13, the mayor and the board trustees is hosting a fishing trip at 5:00 AM. If anyone, if you know any young boys or girls, if they're interested in going, contact me. Also, National Night Out is August 6th, 5:00 PM will be at Denton Green. And Gospel Night will be August 16th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Denton Green.
I'd like to thank you all, I would like to thank you in your duty and bring it up.
Where is the, personal service wireless?
Good evening, Mayor. Let's see, so we're in the city meeting. I'm getting the status report for what I've done this month. There was no personal wireless for me, but I did approve and sent over a script application for review with building department. And I am now reviewing the T-Mobile application located at 135, let me see it on the rooftop. Other than that, they pay their fees and nobody's going to approve until they are approved by the building department.
Traffic Safety Board? Good evening, Chairman. We held a meeting on June 27th. We had three items that were asked at that meeting. First was to remove no parking 8:00 after 4:00 PM Tuesday signs that were along the side of Merrell Street from Webb Avenue to Moore Avenue. And install no parking 8:00 after 4:00 PM coin states, signs along the east side of Merrell Street from Webb Avenue to Moore Avenue. Different leg or streets with you. Install no parking 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM signs along the north side of Atlantic Avenue from Barnes St. to Junior East until 155 feet plus to Oakdale Avenue. This informs to what's happening on the other side of the street as well. Install a stop sign on Montague Avenue for roadbound traffic each section of Liverage Street. People are running that, it's a T-junction. I don't know why people don't automatically assume a stop at a T-junction, but people think they can look through it. There's a lot of stupid driving up there. Please note these regulations will take effect and sign to mark these, getting notice thereof are considered. This is our submission. We will not be having a meeting next month or in August, so you won't be seeing me for the August or September meetings because we won't have a meeting. We did have a number of complaints about large trucks going through small streets. And we had a lot of complaints about parking. There's no parking in the village. I wish the zoning board would involve us more in looking at the streets around things when they're improving various construction things, you know, buildings and things around the village because the parking situation in Hempstead is absolutely horrendous in many , many areas. And we get a lot of complaints. So I don't know what you knew about it because things are built already. And it's, you know, it, we get a lot of hassles which shouldn't, you know, wind up at our board because people can't park after something's been built.
Ms. Barnes, I have a quick question. The parking signs that you just read off?
Yeah.
Those are the ones that you're requesting the board to approve?
Yeah, the board has to, I mean, only if they have to move on anything that we recommend.
Right. Do you have that list already? Is that, is that a request for tonight because that's not a resolution?
No.
No.
Okay.
But it's something that you would add at some point.
So for the August.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just like to piggyback though, Ms. Barnes, you're saying it, it, there seems to be a little bit of lack of communication in the process. You know, from, from time of submission, various building department applications, the traffic safety board doesn't get notified of things that the zoning board may have already approved. There's no, you know, traffic issues, things that are going to be impact traffic should at least go through that board, or at least they should have the opportunity to align on such things. And that doesn't seem to happen. Very similar happened with the planning board. There's items that wind up in the planning board that, that by the time we see it in the planning board, you know, zoning had already approved it. So the planning board is going to be limited in what they can actually approve. So, so we, I think at some point in time, we're going to need to take a stop and take a deep breath and figure out what it is that we want to approve, whether it be the type of buildings we want to approve. So we don't run into so many, if you go down Main Street, our facades just look different, right? It's just a hodgepodge of stuff because there is no plan involved in that. So at some point in time, we have to take a deep breath and just call a stop to all of this, you know, all this building here and there without a plan.
Yeah. But additionally, whenever they're like, if they're planning up an apartment building or something, they should make sure that there's sufficient parking for the residents.
Agreed.
And it should be free to the people who are, you know, I, I heard about that building up at the top of Maine where they were all parking on the street because it was too expensive to park their cars in the, in the lot, you know, because there was a, a big additional charge, a monthly fee on the, on the rental. And, and they're already paying for their apartments, not cheap. So I can just find that very offensive.
We appreciate that. And Ms. Braysden made a point of that too, in writing too, Megan. I have quotes, banks and work out a plan as she's called in other communities. There's a coordination between zoning, planning, pre-planning and traffic safety, it seems to be less than a trick. So we appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Civics Association?
Don't get me started.
You in the council? Zoning Board?
Yes.
This is a report for the case attorney on June 6th, Justice Pritchett and Trustee Daniels. I'll address one of the questions that you had mentioned about parking because that was more like items that we had up here. The first case we had was case 1979, which is a building located or site located at 545 Peninsula Boulevard. There's, they can land where the existing building is. They are going to build two additional buildings, or two families on that particular corner. We're also part of the, as the grant was given, there's also going to be room space involved with that and parking, providing for these apartments. And we had granted that. Case 187, sorry, this is 1987. The S gas station that was on Peninsula Boulevard over there, which has been there since 1977, is being rebranded to a whole market, which we granted, and they increased the tiny size. They're looking for 15,000 gallon tanks, which we're responsible for on that. And if combined with local zoning for signage, it's not going to be in your face, it's not going to be a mountain. And they were also agreeing to green space and landscaping on that, to be quite an excellent. On case 1989, case 1989, we had a legal housing issue where the, to cover up, converted into the inner districted building, converted into, like I said, a third apartment. So what we did was on that, we adjourned it to 9 September 5th to give the current owner a chance to fill out the violations and come back to us and prove to us that it's not going to happen in a mountain there. Case 1992, we're, we had a request to subdivide a lot to two single family homes, which were insufficient lot size. We denied that home because density and issue of parking, we also took that into account. Case 1993, we're doing the continuation to get the lease agreement from the adjacent property for lease, which is currently at 39 plus per annum. And case 1994, had an application in for 21 apartments to be built on an existing building, which when the patient presented to us, if scope of work was reduced down to 12, unit rather than the original 21. And what the owner of that building votes, it was purchase the property adjacent to it to provide parking for that issue. The original building was filled at an efficiency of 225 parking spaces. The additional 12 units isn't creating up any more than an additional four parking spaces for him. And he went ahead as part of his plan, purchased the property next to it and is providing parking, which is another 75 parking spaces. So we do address, which was earlier, the question of parking and density. So we do look at this. Any questions?
Just yet. Case 1989, did you report that to the building department?
Yes. Yeah. That's sort of your report, it had been in court. And what we're looking for is for us in coming back to show us that he did satisfy the court. And it is going to be in compliance with what our requirements are. When I say our requirements, the building's zoning.
It was 1990, 1994. Where are we, the apartment?
1994? Oh, I'm sorry, put the address on there. This is the building on, you know, what's that?
That's a really house, right? Is that a real building?
Yes. Yes, correct. That's on Columbia.
Or he was moving.
Yes, thank you. I apologize when I put it on there. Any questions, Mayor?
Is there anything else about the apartment?
No, no, maybe.
What's the adjacent lot that they had in 756?
Where you have surely Columbia.
Right.
Right on the corner, there's a small parcel that I believe is in the hand yard.
Okay.
Directly across the street, right there, is where they purchased the property.
Oh, they purchased that?
They purchased that. So they purchased that parcel and they've been increasing the ability for that building for 12 years. And again, they did come back, they scaled it down from 20 years down to 12 years.
They scaled it back from 21 to 20.
Correct. Yeah. So they reduced it back to 20. And they went ahead and provided those little support services, which is responsible.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Braysden.
Thank you.
Sorry, 380, so 380 is the old pass that's on Peninsula right by, by the laundry?
By South Franklin? No, no, this is more visible on by the.
By the yard, where you turn.
Okay. Got it.
And what were they doing?
Across the street, then you have that corner on Franklin.
Are they doing anything to that corner? On that fortress?
What they're doing is they actually purchased and only that, but they took over the property as well. That corner is going to have an inverse segress over there and then the landscaping. So it is going to be, now we took about the little triangle?
Yeah, you got a little triangle where you can bear right onto Peninsula, right? From there, and then you've got the little.
That fence area with the construction, they're always parking there, they're taking that, that was part of the deal. So they're modifying that, it's a small amount of land, it's not a tremendous amount. They're going to have inverse segress by that corner, so you're not always coming in off Peninsula. And on the side street, probably the corners is, they also acquired that piece of property over there, so cars will be allowed to come in and out of the gas station, not always on Peninsula. So we created an additional, well, they did on their plan.
So they can still exit onto Peninsula?
Yes. They're providing us with a generator, backup generator, they're providing us with air and landscape.
Thank you, sir.
Any more?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Planning Board met on June 17th at 6:30 PM. Present was Rashid Walker, Leroy Brown and the team, Marcy Turner and Community Pettis. Also present was Tracy August, Council to the Planning Board and Michelle Banks, who met straight to the planning board. The acceptance of minutes was moved by Community Pettis at the meeting of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20th. Be dispensive and be accepted as reviewed, seconded by Rashid Walker, all ready to go. I just want to say before I get to follow up case decisions, I just want to thank Trustee Daniels for attending the planning board meeting last month to see some of the frustrations that you go through when we get plans that has already been approved. And then it's hard for us to question things because it's already been passed. So it's sort of like repeating ourselves or going through the motions because there is no correlation between the planning board, the building department and the zoning board and maybe the traffic. Because a lot of questions that are posed, it's, it's almost like a midpoint, I should say, acid of options because it's already been moved. So we, the only thing that we do, we just approve the site plan approval only. So when that comes before you, we only approve the site plans. The following cases were, the following cases were approved. Case number 758, 465, 475 and 45, Fort Street for site plan approval only to construct a two-story mixed-use building with eight retail and nine apartment rooms. Case number 784, 250 South Franklin Street for site plan approval only to construct a split base block building. Case number 785, 785 Peninsula Boulevard for site plan approved for M-I-M, as if you can letter M higher, performance auto body. And case number 786, 211 Fulton Avenue for site plan approval for Royal Care and State Offices. There being no further business, a motion was made by Community Pettis to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Leroy Brown, all ready to go. The next planning board meeting will be held on Monday, July 15th, 2019 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Is there any way that we can get these different departments coordinated? Seems like every, every month, you hear it the same way over and over again. Perhaps there's something we can do to make certain that everybody's on the same train. Right now, it seems like we're going in circles.
Okay. I'm hearing it loudly everywhere again, Ms. Braysden, you started this again last month. We have a sadly community, so we're trying to put something together. Just keep one thing in mind, that the legislative body of a municipality has no authority to change, modify or overturn decisions, zoning board for example. So we are definitely involved, but we are not able to make those types of decisions. What we do is coordinate so the decisions that are made at the level are the right ones. So we'll work on that. And I'll talk to the attorney again tomorrow and see if we can come up with a, a plan that will remove the confusion that seems to be prevalent.
Yeah, so in the interim, can we stop? Shouldn't we stop?
Right.
Why? If we know it's broken, why do we continue to let things go? Why do that pig go through the snake if the snake is broken?
You could hire a video guy to film everything. Do that.
Point of warning, Mr. Mayor, is this an open meeting? Are discussions, are we in public?
Thank you.
Good evening.
So I have a couple things that I want to go over, the Village of Hempstead Housing Authority. We just granted our generator bid, which is a state, the senior Douglas, Douglas. Really, dear? The vote had to sixty Clinton, which is the senior Douglas Department building. They don't have a generator. So what we did was we had generator bid go out. It was granted to Corales Electrical Construction Corporation, which will be in long reach. We expected to start in, I think it was July, but right now we have to submit a permit or inspection to the Health Department. The engineer who's working on this with us, who needs to fix the right, the seal, open it up and load it on the Lyra. We also have cockles that are going on, on sixty Clinton Street. So we had someone called Charlie Blacktop that's coming in, who's going to be striking up our parking lot, as well as the, we strike them on time. Some of our seniors have been complaining about they don't come enough activities. So I've been talking with other senior, senior programs out there to bring more activities added on to what we do already. So looking very forward to that. Also, we reached out to the NAF County Traffic Safety through Gary Sawyer, a traffic engineer, who came to 260 Clinton Street to talk about a, a traffic study because that been that the road is on it very fast. So one of the things that they, they drive right back, I'm sorry, on that, on that thing. The traffic study requested was from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. What they have done for us so far, they do have a lot of signage put on that street that Yale, that Yale on. We have, we are properties that are on Yale, those little courts, it's a one-way street. So we have better signage now, we have signage that says, "Show and Play," and we attribute that to the traffic safety board, they do a good for us. We also have a kitchen at 260 Clinton Street that we just had to pick up again, had to reapply for that, thank you Mayor for helping us with that also, with Assemblywoman Ryan, we ran on, she helped us with that as well. So there's about 18 steps. I had to reapply, it's not a grant, it's reimbursable grant, I had to find out. So I had to reapply because the former EB, she applied, I had to reapply all over again. But the, the grant was for 127, 125,000 dollars. And they guaranteed that we can still get that, but I thought it was a process of that and it's like 18 steps and we're about step 10, um, to getting that done. And we only had to get it done because there was a, um, there was a stove that was in there that wasn't up to the vertical. And so we had to get a special hood, a special, a special stove and, and all that for that. Also, I'm pleased to say that we were able to this year pay off our 2018 pilot. Also, um, I'm pleased to say that we were able to, this year, pay off our two thousand and eighteen pilot. So, we did that for you, um, thank you for that. And also, um, I talked, we have a lot, a big problem with safety and security on all of our properties. So, her gave us a two thousand and nineteen grant came out, the capital funds for safety and security. So, I submitted for that, that went in on June fifth, it's about six weeks before they get the award. We put in for a hundred fifteen thousand dollars for the grant, to make sure that we have cameras if we get awarded. It will be on Titan, it will be on Yale, it will be at two sixty, and it will be, um, I think that's all right, did I, I mentioned all right, did I ask? I missed one. It's Titan, two sixty, Yale, and Gladys. Because right now, there's no security cameras on Gladys nor Yale. And what we're going to do is, or my, my ambitious goal is to make sure that we, the, the access system that we have already at Titan and at two sixty is compromised tremendously. So, the grant is to, to just redo that all over again, to make sure that we, we eliminate that system, bring a new system in also. And possibly also put in a grant where we have people coming in and out, that we have license readers, or sell something that can give the license reader license licenses in the system. Something a little better, because what I did was I tried to reach out to, to security people to see what works best, where they're at. Um, also with that, there's a security waiver, um, you know, when I first came on board as the director, it was the Southern Housing Authority, and now it's Substandard. So, we are moving in the right direction. Um, as a result, because we're Substandard now, we are actually able to do more things. So, what that comes in the waiver, so we have a waiver that I applied for, it's anti-crime, anti-drug waiver. For large P H J's over two hundred and fifty, we have two hundred and actually eighty-one units. And what that waiver will help us do, and will help us use our operating funds and our capital funds, because capital fund is only for equipment. So, it gives us opportunities to go into our operating funds and do something there. The operating funds helps us, because then we're able to, um, pay for more people to come on board salary-wise for security for us. And I think the last thing I wanted to mention to you is that we have a, um, Family Day that's coming, um, a family barbecue. It's going to be, everyone's invited, you'll get invitations soon. It will be, um, August twenty-fourth, and the birthday is September seventh.
Yeah, I would ask if, you know, my, my trusty house comments, this is recently, I believe you were able to take it thoroughly.
Yes, and so, um, we, we had a meeting concerning some of the issues that we had in the building. And, uh, you are continuing to give this information to our detective, right?
Yes.
We have trouble every, okay.
Absolutely. I provided you with the list. Also, what I did, um, what I did, I think that, that's Thursday, this, the, last Thursday, actually came up at ten o'clock when our, our strip came on board for security. And I walked around, got some information from them also. The information that I gathered, gave to the victim, was from what? We know from people telling us in our staff, but I also wanted to get some information, and some, some, some information from our actually security guards. They're very knowledgeable, too. They give us a lot of information. Some that we already knew, but some that we didn't.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we can just share that information.
Oh, absolutely, I appreciate that.
It, it jumped to us, we don't have that information.
I agree, I agree, thank you so much.
Mr. Smith, before, um, I'm excuse me, I'll tell you.
I'm sorry.
I have, uh, several concerns.
Yes.
On my cell phone, I have several text messages from residents of two sixty Clinton, they're complaining about the youth there in the building. That should not be in the building, they're complaining about drug activity, and I was told that it was a drug overdose in, uh, two sixty.
That confirmed. We don't know what that is. What happened was, there was someone who actually, I think it was last Monday or Tuesday, that fired someone's apartment. I just speak to the honest about that, and the victim, or the police, the person, because we have, there's to be a autopsy, has to be done to prove that. Because of my understanding of person, it's a, also, my suspicion is that it could be, but not if we have an autopsy. The information that we did get from the, from the person whose apartment it was in, um, one of the things was that he didn't tell, he didn't tell us the name of the person. So, with that information, we couldn't even contact the family, because they probably, the person might as, we could have done natural causes, but they might not have figured about getting an autopsy. So, I know the kind of victim that worked in the United City, there's information on us for that. And also, we, we, the legal counsel, the legal counsel was talking about. So, he said the same thing to me, and he said, you know, where is the proof of that, because of having proof as a yet?
Also, I'm just learning about the lack of programs for senior citizens, for senior residents. Most of these buildings are for seniors, uh, two sixty Clinton's for seniors, and I think by now, we should have programs for the seniors. So, well, for now, if you've been in this room, we have people with informed, you know, and we are, it's still, senior population, Hempstead. I'm not going to say their name, but they, before the meeting is over, they can reach out and do an office of direct assistance when it comes to senior population.
I agree, um, you know, we have, the, the, the village, they have their senior center, it's there, um, it's bare minimal. Nothing but a normal, other building also. That's why I've had some conversations with other agencies to see if they can also bring some extra things also to, to our, um, to our, to our seniors. And I, I would definitely take that on, and anyone can reach out to me, I appreciate it, because they do need that, they need more than just being home.
Your building on Yale Street, what uses it?
The building itself?
Yeah, I love the Yale Street.
Community buildings?
Yes.
So, community building, what we did was, uh, Attorney Commissioner, uh, Erica Seymour.
Yes.
When she was developing a program that she couldn't run right there for our kids, it would be three days, three days out. When we, she had, we're formulating it now, we just gave her the key to that building. So, now we're going to look at the building, see how she can use it, play it out at the movie night, with things for the youth, some security possibly. She had a program that she didn't help me develop with her, was trying to do that for the Seymour, and she pursued the key, and that's what we did. Also, that's not for that, because there are other people who also need it, but primarily, it'll be used for the youth. But there's no playground there, there's nowhere for them to play. And it's a very wonderful building, so people are supposed to be, if they're old, and they need to be able to use that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have, uh, a question. Uh, number one, you mentioned, uh, all types of problems. What kind of problems, uh, what type of problems are you reporting to, to you, talking about this senior housing?
The problem, that's not the problems, the, the, well, the problems I'm talking about is really the youth, the people who aren't supposed to be there. Um, one of the hardest things is because security isn't where shipping when I first got there, and it's hard to try to get, we don't have money right now to get enough security there. So, we do have these areas there, we have people who don't belong there, and we are a tenant-friendly state, and it's making it hard for admissions. One of the things that I did, when we got our legal counsel, was come into some type of agreement where he would give us the person a hundred admissions for free. And I, 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 I loved that idea, but I realized that it's not as easy as it is, and they, and that's another thing that's a problem. The building itself is getting a lot better, they have a lot of plumbing issues, but that's coming along. We, we don't have as many plumbing issues, um, we do have a roof that we're trying to, we've got one roof fixed on top, and trying to do roof on two sixty. The buildings are pretty much okay in repair, but it's just that the element of people that's in our properties.
You have, you miss the security, how many security guards do you have there?
We don't have one security guard for each building, we don't have a security guard for Titan, we don't have a security guard for ladders. Because of the garden style, family style apartments, but we do have one for Titan and one for two sixty. And they come on, they come onto one shift, I have to figure out what shift, because I remember I first came on board, the shift was kind of where we left. Well, I figure let's change that shift, let's change the shift from two, ten P M to three A M. And so, that's what the shift is, so that shift, in seven days, the dust was three days, four days, so now it's seven days at one shift. And then, once we get better physically, as we are going in that direction, and especially with this waiver that I just applied for, which allows us, because we have our status improved, will allow us to therefore use some of that operating money to use core security for anti-drug, for anti-drug and anti-crime, which is perfect for what we need. And once that, we get the reward back from that, then that money will be used to make sure that we can put salaries for those who will be working, so we can have more security. Because I crunched the numbers, it, it, it looked like if we tried to do at least eighteen hours of security, and we do two people, so, because, you know, one thing is we should have a partner, so one goes and one can, you know, sorry, can still be there. When I crunched the numbers with the board member, it came to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which we just don't, just don't have.
So, I, I just wanted to do three, your security number from, um.
From ten?
From ten?
Ten, to three, A M.
How many entries do you have there?
All right, we had a.
How many entries do you, like, do you have?
Okay, so, at two sixty, the thing with two sixty is, the community stuff for two sixty is, we have a, a, um, we have, so we have a back, we have two lobbies, two lobbies. First full lobby and basement lobby.
You did that, kind of.
So, so what happens is, there, no, well, we can't lock it, personally, we can't lock the lobby, we can't lock it, we have to keep it open. So, what happens is that's where most of the people, some people are not most of them, they come through there. So, we have our staff person who's on the first lobby, where people are coming in with the buzzer, where the mailbox is.
Okay, I'm sorry, you did that.
That's where they come through, because they have to be posted, so that's where we post them. But right underneath that, on the basement, is another entrance and another lobby. And that, that's a lobby that, you know, we have a camera on, but we also have that lobby where people can come in, people can jam doors, people can come in that way.
Can you lock it from the outside? The basement lobby?
It's, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those doors where you can lock it, it's a panic door also, but it, you, you know, it's one of those things. I don't know why, why the building was constructed that way. But we want to close it, we want to lock it, so we can't. If one person opens it up on the inside, opens out, they can jam it anyway, even if you lock it from the outside, you can't get out.
So, anyone can come, can enter through that?
No, no, they, they, they need, they, they need a key lock, but.
Right.
So, so, listen, um, I will continue to, uh, be making business here, and this is why we need you to do your reports. If you're not here, somebody from the, from your housing needs to be here, so we can stay abreast of this.
Okay, absolutely.
But then, then, we, we have all, uh, issues that we will address, but we can't do it alone.
Right, and that's why, and that's why, to your express, say one thing, that's why with the grant, that's why I said the whole access control can be breached. And that's why I wanted to do the whole access control for both of them.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you.
C D A?
Good evening, ma'am, and me. Good evening, Mayor Ryan and Justice.
Good evening.
So, I have a list of updates on ongoing projects, starting with Vampire State Poverty Reduction Initiative, also known as S three. Our grant term has been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, and the C D A has requested an additional fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty, uh, dollars to support the Community Empowerment Resource Center through the end of that grant term. These funds will be matched by the C D A's Community Development Block Grant Funds. I do have, uh, some success stories to share, uh, for three former tenants of one hundred terraces, have been able to move their families out, um, of that unit as a direct result of well-paid job security after receiving OSHA thirty training, partially funded through the S three initiative and the C D A, um, C D A funds, um, working in cooperation with ABBA, and Nethanu Dea, and, um, Genesis Construction Training. I also want to share that we are currently having an open house, the Community Empowerment Resource Center, you should all have applied, the slides in the back. Uh, open house on July thirteenth, which is a Saturday from ten A M to three P M. We decided to do this because we found that a lot of the people who would like to see services work, and they're not able to access the center during normal business hours, so we're exploring having Saturday hours once a quarter, as well as trying to develop, um, evening hours once a quarter. So, the Local Initiative Support Coalition has granted to the C D A an additional fifty thousand dollars to help with our zombie homes initiative. We will work with the task force to determine the best use of this additional funding, but the majority of the funding will be allocated to support the dedicated Housing Inspector and Board Chairman Officer that manages the inventory of zombie homes, making sure that they're secured, identifying any violations, reporting back to the building department any violations, and making sure that our list of zombie homes stays updated. In Hempstead Community Land, oh, C D A Properties. Uh, Five D Architecture Engineering has developed a preliminary site plan for thirty-eight Thorn Avenue. We have one before the Pre-Submissions Board, and we're currently, um, seeking zoning board and planning board approvals. Uh, Five D will also be developing a design, a site plan for the properties that the C D A owns on Linden. We anticipate that, uh, one duplex will be, be, um, put on thirty-eight Thorn, and three duplexes will be put on Linden, subject to planning board and zoning board approval. Hempstead Community Land Trust, we conducted a fair housing training at the board meeting held on June eleventh. The next general meeting of the Hempstead Community Land Trust will be held next Tuesday, July ninth, at Community Park beginning at six thirty. I should share that we are looking to co-develop our units with, um, the Hempstead Community and the Land Trust, and also are facilitating them being qualified as a community housing development organization, which would allow them to access additional funding with the Nassau County Consortium. City brought us to school, Jackson Lane Elementary School Design Creates have been completed, and then Project Big closed on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The results are currently under review. We anticipate that construction will be completed before the school event, um, begins. The s, educational component for David A Patterson, as well as Jackson Lane, we, will be implemented in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. Major Communication Project, it's in its final phase. We already have started two plinths, benches, bike racks, and tracks, reception, receptacles will be installed this month. We anticipate delivery of the word feature will be completed, delivery and installation will be completed by August, two thousand and nineteen. I also should mention, I've had several people inquire as to the repaving of the streets now that the sidewalks have been improved. I should let you know that one of the issues that our threshold challenge is making sure that we, um, can upgrade the sewers before paving the streets. And so, we're ironing out, um, solution as to how we get the sewers addressed, because we don't want to repave the streets only to rip them up again, and upgrade the sewers to have them repaved. So, that's an ongoing challenge that we're, we're looking to resolve. A groundfill opportunity area, we had our public meeting on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, in the library. Uh, the report should be finalized, which is the market study and preliminary report, which incorporates public comments. It should be completed for review by September, two thousand and nineteen, will then have a thirty-day public comment period, so that will be available when we receive the comments back. Once the comments are addressed and incorporated, the finalized report is scheduled to be submitted to the New York State Department of State by December, two thousand and nineteen. And this will allow the Secretary of State to designate the downtown area as a groundfill opportunity area, which will allow the village to receive prioritization for funding, for example, for the downtown revitalization initiative, once we receive that official designation. And we hope that that will be done in time, so we will be able to apply for the next round of funding in June of two thousand and twenty. I want to share that we have taken on three summer interns thus far. Bank of America has provided a grant funding through United Way for us to hire one college student, one high, high school student. So, Angela Kante is a two thousand and eighteen Hempstead High School graduate and a Rising sophomore at University of Buffalo. And Melvin Morales is a Rising senior at Hempstead High School. In addition, Deandre Denton, who's a Hempstead resident and a Rising senior at Houston University, is being sponsored for our second internship through Houston and the C D A. Also want to share that I've been appointed to serve as one of seven representatives on the newly established Long Island Committee on Workforce Development to offer guidance and assistance in making funding recommendations to the Regional Economic Development Council. Uh, the New York State has made a hundred and seventy-five million dollars available, uh, to support strategic regional efforts that need businesses, short-term workforce needs, address long-term industry needs, improve regional talent pipe lines, enhance flexibility, and adaptability to local workforce entities, and expand workplace learning opportunities. Applications are considered on a rolling basis. Applications are considered on a rolling basis, with funding being used first to eligible projects on first come, first served basis. For more information, the website is www.ny.gov/workcoursdevement. I will also be speaking at an information session regarding this initiative at SUNY Farmingdale on January, Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Um, if anyone is interested
January?
Excuse me, July, I'm not in a long day. If anyone is interested, um, you do have to RSVP, you can contact the CDA for additional information. And lastly, uh, St. Long Island, uh, we attended, uh, on Ju- on June nineteenth, attended an empowerment, marketing, and management session. Um, the CDA is a member of St. Long Island in cooperation with Houshford University, which was funded through J.K. Morgan Chase, and this works to identify and promote opportunities for small and minority businesses in what has been defined as a corridor, Hempstead Village, U.D. Del Freeport Village, and Roosevelt. And this program offers access to capital, capacity building, and networking opportunities to expand entrepreneurship and access to public empowered contracts. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
The next floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Board of Trustees, Village residents. Here to present the, um, report from the, uh, last meeting of the Electoral Licensing Board. It was held on June twenty-seventh and called order at four fifteen PM. Members President, President, or Mr. Constantine, Electoral Inspector, Mr. Kengeni, myself, uh, and Mr. Castilio. Um, Mr. Demetri was absent, definitely excused. Minutes at a regular meeting of the May Meeting of two thousand nineteen were approved as read by unanimously by the board. Um, applicants take the exam or none for this upcoming month. We, uh, had one applicant took part two, um, she did very well. Um, her name is Ms. Renee B. Diaz, from Garden City, New York. As far as we know, she might be the first licensed female electrician if she gets approved by the board. Um, so we thought that was pretty nice. Uh, discussion took place, uh, for Article two ten, uh, point fifty-two F of the National Electrical Code, required outlets in dwelling units specifically, uh, wondery area. Um, we discussed that, and also discussed Article two ten and dash twelve, the National Electrical Code, articles are interruptive protection in dwelling units and specific requirements for them. Um, with being no other business study to conduct, adjourned meeting at six PM respectfully submitted. Any questions? I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July, just.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Running board? Mr. Doherty?
Good evening, Mayor Ryan and trustees.
Good.
Everybody does. Um, sorry, I didn't really, um, during May or the June, I was in contact with an elderly inhabitant of Thimwell Hempstead in Eland, which is the birthplace of several of the Englishmen that came here in sixteen forty-three. This gentleman, Mr. Richard Hans, attended the nineteen ninety-three celebration of Hempstead's three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary. He has written a book about his location that he wishes to present to the villagers through our library and to the town of Hempstead. He's in New Jersey now visiting his son. May the rain stream become and meet with Mayor Ryan, myself, and other officials as seems appropriate at ten o'clock on July sixteenth, when we will create an occasion for receiving his book and thanking him for his efforts. I started a weekly short column in the Hempstead Beacon that presents Hempstead historical tidbits. Each article has a vintage image and a paragraph of historical information. In this way, I can disseminate more historical information to the villagers and also keep recording Hempstead history in print. Um, a gentleman who stopped by Villatall last week and saw the mayor's wall exhibit has expressed interest in having his school in Elmont come here for a field trip. He left his number with Ginny Christensen, and I called it, but have not yet heard back from him. I am about thirty hours from finishing a novel that I've been working on since twenty thirteen, a personal project that I need to complete. I will finish it this week and will then focus more attention on my ongoing historical projects, like finishing the Rupiah Division. Respectfully, you're in depth.
Thank you.
Assistant Chairman, your honor. Thank you.
Restored by the recommendation issued by the village attorney that board trustees hereby schedule to vote early to consider amendment chapter nine, the amendments of the code of the Rupiah Division Hampstead, whereas the village board of street society still have the code of the Rupiah Division Hampstead to postpone amendment of open fatherment, the boards hand hand with community members in trying to make progress into life and work in the village. Now, therefore, the village, now, therefore, the village board of society is hereby scheduled publicly given to be held on the fifth day of August two thousand and nineteen at six fifteen PM of the Hempstead Village Board, nine nine AM in the barn door in the swimming pool, to consider amendment chapter nine.
Move, second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Restored by the recommendation issued by the village attorney I turned in a question. I just submitted.
Yeah, but we did it prior to your entrance here. We didn't start the meeting. Yes, I haven't. I haven't, but it has to be presented prior to the meeting, and then discussed. Once the meeting begins, the next time you haven't made a deal, yeah.
Restored by the recommendation issued by the village attorney that the board trustees hereby approve the amendment to chapter twenty-four of the season periods per on Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand and nineteen of the code of
To amend.
To amend the code of the Rupiah Division Hampstead. Under reason.
They'll be there next time.
Restored by the recommendation of the village attorney that the board trustees hereby approve the amendment to chapter twenty-four of the season periods, which publicly was held from Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand and nineteen, of the code of the Rupiah Division Hampstead.
So move.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Restored by the recommendation of the village attorney to authorize settling the passing right of matter, code of the Rupiah Division Hampstead, for the coverage known as one fifty-one dash one fifty-sixth Sandy Street. I say here, those taxes due to the thirty-fourteen, the two thousand nineteen twenty, the total amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
Move, second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
There are some followings received, that are received in Hempstead, boys' bank, church, and Scotts practice nursery, or the P.A. that is to the Boulevard and St. Mary's, one five zero. On August thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, through September first, two thousand and nineteen, from five PM to nine PM, had a total cost of two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And after calculations, three percent, the total cost will be one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars to be paid. Separation is continued upon, compliance with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department. No liability information for the holding of this event in observance of the code of the village Hampstead as it applies to the galleries of this site. The finding of all appropriations as determined by the board hearing in identification from the execution of a wholehearted agreement on such strength and conditions has been acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
First office to follow this initiative, for the station to be granted, for all the way one hundred percenting in the box, which means from St. Mary's, one one five five zero, to hold a community outreach and help awareness, and always stand two thousand and nineteen, for twelve noon to seventeen AM, at a total cost of five hundred eighty-one dollars. And after calculations, eighty percent, the total cost of four hundred and sixty-four dollars in maintenance to be paid. Separation is continued upon, compliance with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department, and no liability information for the holding of this event in observance of the code of the village Hampstead as it applies to the galleries of this site. The finding of all appropriate insurance as determined by the board hearing in identification as the execution of a wholehearted agreement on such strength and conditions as may be acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Second.
Justice Johnson?
Uh, second.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
First office to follow this resolution that are received to be granted, for choice for wholehearted market, to be held from July thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, through October thirty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, to Saturdays only, from nine AM to fourteen AM at no cost. Separation is continued upon, compliance with the rules and regulations of the Hempstead Police Department, no liability information for the holding of this event in observance of the code of the village Hampstead as it applies to the galleries of this site. The finding of all appropriate insurance as determined by the board hearing in identification from the execution of a wholehearted agreement on such strength and conditions as may be acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Question. And who, who, who is proof, who are the guys that wear this?
There are representatives here, if you have questions. The module lot at Hickel's Park, so that's gonna be this one. Fourteen? This one right here? I mean, fourteen.
Yes, these are the, the group that's in the, uh, train station.
No. The one right here.
I was trying to make sure it was not the same, not the same.
Are we comfortable voting or?
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Restored by the recommendation of the village attorney to appoint Catherine Gail to the town in Cleveland as a special prosecutor at thirty and rate of forty dollars per hour.
Thank you. So move. Second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Restored by the recommendation issued by the village attorney that the board trustees hereby approve the public relations contractual agreement with, uh, Pat Schiffler Associates, effective July second, two thousand and nineteen, through May thirty-first, twenty twenty.
So move. Nineteen, second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
So moving to eleven eight. First office to follow this resolution, restored by the recommendation of the man, Danny David Clark, the board trustees hereby approve the appointment of seasonal employees on the Rupiah Division Hampstead, as reviewed.
So move. Second.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Restored by the recommendation of George Gill, village treasurer, all near hills, ordered by board trustees, which are more than daily July second, two thousand and nineteen, be approved as previously reviewed.
So move, right.
Justice Johnson?
Yes.
Justice Hobbs?
Yes.
Justice Reckro?
Yes.
Justice Daniels?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. I will go to the open mic. The first person to turn one hundred, treat your appeal.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Um, our streets are very narrow, very narrow. And I'm on my third mirror for this year, as it is. And others, other cars in my block have the same problem. What can we do? It wasn't a one-way street when I moved here. Then people petitioned for it to go to a two-way street. Those people are dead and gone, and we have far more cars parked up here than ever. What can we do to make this happen? Either make it a one-way street, no right on red, but we must do something. And the second thing is, street sweeping. We have far more cars, far more people in this village. We have to adjust the street sweeping schedule. They came by my block the other day at three twenty-two in the afternoon. You cannot expect your neighbors to keep their cars on the street all day till three twenty-two. You call to the village office at three twenty-two in that department, you cannot reach anyone. But they come in by at three twenty, and that's messing with your office, don't. They came by three twenty-two last week to sweep the streets. That's crazy. They've been waiting all day, now it goes to three twenty-two. Maybe we should have street sweeping more frequent. I don't know how frequent they come out, but it's just not working.
What street is it?
Crochet.
Crochet.
Then we have department heads, it's great they come and give us an update on what transparent, what happened at their last meeting, but maybe they can give us an update on what's coming. Somehow, they have to know some things on the agenda was gonna happen in the next sixty to ninety days, thirty to ninety days. Maybe they can give us a heads up on some things that's coming, upcoming on the agenda. And Hobbs, I'm sorry you were not here when we gave the letter for the library, for the program, the library for the Spanish class. It was, thank you very much, it was well received, and we would like to try again, maybe you can somehow try to fit it in your budget, and see, or miss the others. You know, there's none of you guys get paid, you understand, no one gets paid. And the market's half what you get, so you get half or nothing.
I thought you were talking about the person, but.
Pay you down like that. And, um, but we have things for seniors, there's other seniors that reside in villages in Hempstead who pay very heavy to live here. They all don't live in public housing. So there should be some type of listing, or someplace that seniors can go to find out what's happening, what programs are going on. You guys have seen picnics, you have seen a day at Kenny Park, you have a lot of things going on. How come all seniors in Hempstead can't be notified of what's, what's happening? And, uh, how do we fight? We have to learn how to fight. There's too many shelters coming up in Hempstead. I'm told there's one that just opened up behind Percy Jackson Center. That's a center for young kids, that's a men's shelter. Come on, do we need that? We already have on my block a men's shelter, and now they start putting a women's shelter right next door. How frequent can you wait? What do you want to do with the homeowners, you don't want us here? Someone needs to teach us how to fight this, because this makes no sense at all. Anyone who decides to come here and do what they want to do, and do what they want to do, we paid dearly for this village in this village, so. We paid a grade in this village, and for the village, there's no mouth to mouth resuscitation here. We need help. I've contacted everyone senior here, and I've gotten much And I've gotten much of nothing back. But we need help on what do we do? What are the steps we're taking? We can't be told with the village and the proven. But we, we, we hope for you guys to represent us, to help us. And that's, doesn't seem to happen.
There's a few things that you might expect to count on, Berkeley. I know you had brought up the no term on right of the court of Ku Chang and Greenwich. Greenwich being County Street, they have the rule on that, and they turned that opportunity down. But we did approach on your behalf to that over residence. As terms of the women's shelter, you may say, maybe we have no record of any women's shelter that supplied yet. We'll keep an eye on that because you had suggested that's what you heard.
We got seniors on that block, that's a couple of blocks.
No, I'm saying that, I'm just saying that we don't have a record of that presently. The senior picnic and senior events are indeed open to the scenes of the community. Anyone who wishes to attend, it's on the webpage. It is on the webpage.
The seniors who live in senior houses don't have to go to the webpage. Why don't we have a computer and go one?
Well, we also do the mailing, and we list it in advance. So we do the best we can to notify individuals. And you know, I'm certainly wanting to do it then. The other area that you mentioned, narrow streets, a good point, the one-way, again, traffic is safe. They're going to take a poll of the residents of the block. If your opinion is the opinion of the residents of the block, you'll prevail. But you first have to put it right and submit to traffic and safety.
Okay, I just speak to Mary about that, she told me that.
Good.
And the woman from Hempstead Housing, she was saying get a license reader for security, getting out the buildings, getting in the buildings. Everyone doesn't have a license. So will the license reader be able to read other forms of ID? Because I know when I go over to the town, I don't have a license given. They cannot read it. They have, they can't read anything else, even though I have a town ID.
Sure, that's what she meant.
That's what I'm asking, you're asking for clarification?
Right, I thought she meant license reader for the fields.
No, to get entrance into the building, that's the way I asked.
Oh, okay, I didn't actually call it, sorry. I'm pretending.
And what about street sweeping? What are we going to do about that, though?
Well, the street sweeping schedule is submitted in advance. And it's difficult, if not impossible, to tell you exactly what moment they're going to be on every block. They have to give you a block of time, and they'll comply with it.
They leave us eight to two, but now they're coming after three.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, because D W is one of the partners that are, I'm part of the committee.
Yeah, I heard you.
Yeah, so you also have to understand with our street sweepers, if there's a car accident and oil is on the ground or what, they call for a street sweeper to clean it up. So it's hard for them to say that at 2 o'clock we're going to be on your block because there's other things that sometime they're called to. They give you the date that they're going to be in your block, the time period they're going to be in your block, unless it's a block where it has alternate side, uh, street parking. So they know that they have to hit it by a certain time. So that's, that's the best that they can do.
But that is say at 2.
No, here's an example.
All right, what do you have for me on that? Let me respond to the video.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Ryan.
Can you even trust me?
Can you even?
I'm trying not to lose my smile in this village, but it's, my light is going out. I'm upset about the fact that if people come that work in the village, I don't know if you guys give them overtime to come to these meetings, but when they come, you told us a whole lot of questions until the question and answer period. I wanted to know how many 5G towers do we have in this Hempstead? Now, I was told by some people that they were totally giving them a court lead. How do we get our questions answered? Some people may have the same question. Why should we have to call somebody? And a lot of us may have the same question. I thought the purpose of the first meeting is to, for them to give them a court. If we have questions, they should be able to answer our question. Now, there was a shooting on the Dell. What happened at that shooting? And was anybody injured? Because I came home and I, you know, when I came in, there was, the whole block was left off. And, um, the other night was crazy. I don't know if that was on fireworks or what the situation was. But, um, things are happening, and I think that we come to these meetings and we want to know what's going on in our village. And I thought that was the purpose of these meetings. Is that the purpose of these meetings, why we come out? Because if we, if it's not, then I'll stay home. Honestly, I'll stay home, I have other things to do. And, and I think that we, you know, we're getting information and we're getting it late. But I know it was a joke, or we got the information from the councilwoman. But tomorrow is the last day for our children to turn in their paperwork for those jobs. And thank you, Mr. Thomas, you man, for giving me that information. Because a lot of kids are asking me, can we get jobs? So I put it, I put it on my Instagram page, and I put it on my Facebook page. And I hope everybody here does the same thing, and make phone calls. Because our children need jobs. And I think it should have been lower. We have 14, 15-year-olds, those are the ones that get trouble. Let's help get them jobs. I know, we know people that, um, you know, I know Bishop, um, Gates, and you know, people that own Burger King and stuff. Maybe we can talk to some of these businesses and get our young people jobs. We all have connections here. 14, 15-year-olds, they get working papers, they want to work. Let's help them get a work ethic. You know, I was working at 11 years old, I was delivering newspapers. We have to help our kids get a work ethic. Instead of sitting home and playing video games and doing the wrong thing. Give them jobs, and they're asking us to help hire them jobs. We have to figure this out. Because they deserve a chance. But we're not giving them a chance. And why didn't we hire a special prosecutor? I want to know whether we need another one for. And honestly.
So the special prosecutors.
Do you sound the fire? Then you can take, well, you can.
The special prosecutors prosecute the housing code violations and traffic violation in the village every Wednesday when there's court, fifth Wednesday when there's no court. Um, they're per diem, they're only paid when they're here hourly, that's a $40 per hour wage. The reason why we need them is because the special prosecutors are often people who are solo practitioners. They have other jobs, they're supplementing their income. So what can happen is that we'll have a calendar where there may be 100 people out here that a violation is being prosecuted, but only three of them have showed up. So when we, if we keep our options, um, plentiful, then we'll be able to prosecute all those violations quickly and get people out of here so they're not here until 10, 11 o'clock at night. And there's three different court calendars. There's one in the morning, one in the afternoon, one at night. Not all of them can come back at night because they have, you know, other family obligations or what have you. Some of them can't do the morning because they're in court either in 99 Main Street or Family Court, Supreme Court in the morning. So right now, currently in fact, we have a total of seven of them. So even though we may have approved someone tonight, what the public doesn't realize, and I'll just tell you for a fact, we actually go as three. So a lot of times we're replacing, but you don't know what the reservation or the termination has been from the numbers. So this just made number seven, so you know, for the morning, afternoon, the night calendars.
It's good to know, I mean, that's what we're asking. And also, I'd like to know what was the outcome in regards to the stores on Main Street? Are we giving them summonses? Because I don't see any changes in regards to how they look and the cleanup. Like, are we giving them summonses and complaints?
Here we go, bourbon bank raised, definitely, you have some summonses. The Johnson situation you said is something that we were alerted to by senior house owner, who is the under. We made flyers based on the information you gave us. 16 to 21-year-olds, that's the town of Hempstead, Department of Occupational Resources, fourth floor, 15th Main Street, their rule. It was 16 to 17 when he worked in Congress, well. It's amazing that on that day, July 1, there were still 50 old ladies. And we want to take advantage of the best we can. And she was the one who shared that with us, went to the parks, went down terrace, and out the flyers as best I could, and keep people, give you a copy. And we do have a very short window.
I'm smart on the last day.
Absolutely. Now, let me just pause. Somebody in the senior house, some dudes in the store offices here, I'm sorry, hand up. You have something to add to that?
Well, actually, it's two federal grants, and they make the rules, right? And each school, Hempstead, Roosevelt, Uniondale, have liaisons that are supposed to be doing this during the year. When we got the call, there were no applications from Hempstead. Two applications from Roosevelt and five applications from Uniondale. So, senior councilwoman calls the mayor, and between the two of them, two elected officials should not have been engaged in this. But we don't want to lose the money. Our children do need to work. We have to get on the schools and make sure if they need help, if they need volunteers, and that's what I told them, I'd be happy to do so. But it was, it's a federal grant, and they, it's 16 to 21. We asked about the 14, 15-year-olds. But there's a particular, these two particular grants, of those and also barriers. So if there's a, like, a teen in pregnancy, or they got in trouble with a lar. So, but it's two different grants, and altogether, it was 100 slots for these so-called disadvantaged children.
So how many, how many do we need to fill?
I don't, I don't know how many it is now, because I, I, like I said, your mayor and the senior councilwoman both got on it immediately. The mayor was out giving out the flyers. So I don't know what they received today, because when I called the gentleman today to see how many children did show up at, at the site, um, they were already gone. So I don't, I don't have that knowledge.
But in the future, we can maybe look at, um, our lower, our kids, middle school kids are coming to me asking for jobs. And if we can maybe work with Burger King and these other, like, checkers and stuff, they can work at those places. We could maybe, you know, get our kids jobs there. And then the shooting on the Dell, can you give me an update on that?
It's at some place that on June 24, at approximately 9:00 p.m., there were, uh, there was a shot squad activation. There was nine rounds indicated, and we found nine shot cases. There were no property damage or injuries or loss of life.
Thank you.
Oh, and can you, and can you also find out about the 5G towers? How many do we have in Hempstead? She left. But we, I need to find out, because those are very serious towers. And it's, that's, those are serious towers, 5G. How many are we, and, and are we going to put a cap on how many we're going to allow in the village of Hempstead? Because those are, this, they're going to cause a lot of brain damage and stuff like that.
You'll get a phone call tomorrow, thank you. Redmond, Ben, ready?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees. Um, just as an addendum to what Shelley was mentioning, uh, the youth board, Dana Boiling is looking for, uh, young people to go to work right now. They cannot have a record. She's looking for particularly, uh, six African-Americans because the Hispanic community took full advantage of these jobs that in our community were not. So she is particularly concerned about getting some young people to work, um, with her. Uh, so there is opportunity. She's probably right, the information is not getting out too clearly for people. I wanted to talk about, um, some of the work that we've been doing in the village of Hempstead relative to helping people in terms of jobs. And again, I'm grateful, uh, to Charlene and the, uh, the, uh, development agency because what she says about people improving on their lives is true. Um, Mayor, you know some of these people. Aaron Vell, for example, he worked up a whole year over there at the charter school. Now they're making him a project manager on the next project they're doing. Same thing, you remember Anthony White. They took him from the charter school over to, uh, to the Uniondale, and he's heading up the labor force over there in the Uniondale charter school. Anthony, uh, Aaron Burnett has been hired by the United Electrical Company, and he's in full-fledged employment with them. That's as a result of, uh, me working with, uh, the CDA and getting people more training in terms of those OSHA. The OSHA 30 is a more upgrade training that allows people to be supervisors. And as a consequence of that, people are working. She talked about the young people over there, one at Terazan, Shereen Green. He has about five kids. He started working at the charter school, we moved him over to Minneapolis. He's now a supervisor over there. He was able to take his up, and his entire family off of that deadly neighborhood called Terazan. Um, so some good things are happening. But there are some things that I am still very, very concerned about. When you start talking about the work that's going on, oh, by the way, the young man was complaining to you, Mayor, he's happy as a pig in a blanket now. Yeah, he was here last, last meeting you had. After all that complaining, he's been working in the city on the MTA. And because of the stuff that he's learned and the fact that he had certain type of training, we was able to take him over there and do the contractor cleaning up that entire building over there. Uh, they gave us the contractors do the, uh, the cleaning over there. And I know we have a few minutes left. We did security over there, um, not one incident. They had very good stuff there, and we didn't have one incident there. Um, I hate that thing. But, um, let me just say this in 10 seconds. There are a lot of work going on in the village of Hempstead, and it seems like I have to fight their habit. I need some more help from you guys, particularly when they're doing this, this major work on our streets and highways out there. We don't get a chance to get people to work there. They're always talking about people don't want to work. I just gave you some examples of people started from this level, now made up at that level. So that excuse should be thrown out the window. I need you guys help.
Thank you. Thank you for the job on that.
Work is done.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Deputy Mayor. Trustee Daniels. Trustee Hobbs. Trustee Broham Johnson.
Yep.
How are you all? Reason for my purpose of being in here is I'm in the process of doing an analysis in Florida and reference to transitional homes, shelters, and group homes. And I wanted to know if at all possible, any and all information that you had, if you could provide unveiling to me.
Your address, you're still not completely. I got, I got the first part, is that answer that? You're not required to be a resident speaker.
But I am.
Going home, I must take the home question.
For real sake, I'm a former real estate broker, because I own a couple of them. But I heard that there was a huge complaint, so I said, you gotta be up and make an acquisition here. So, you know, I'm a resident now. In fact, once my forwarding registration card comes through, I'll be able to vote you in this new issue. If you're interested in a second time, you got my vote.
We want to maybe hear efforts at Kenning Park in the Boston area.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I enjoyed that Friday night presentation, it did excellent job. Even you selected, it did excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Um, is it possible we provide, if you have anything in reference? Information that I'm requesting?
I'm going to send it, you want to email it to the group home list?
Well, you can email it, that's quick. And you say 50%.
It would be quicker if I had to email it to us here.
Man, man, that's all right.
It's the poll. It's the poll.
Ready?
Oh, don't leave, just tell them, don't leave. Don't leave.
Oh.
No, no, tonight.
Turned in here already, though.
When we did the tiny curry race, which was a lot of fun. Uh, and I also, another project I'm going to get to probably by the end of the summer is I, I went into the race and I kept trying to take pictures of people passing historic buildings. So next time when we do it, I'll have made up a little brochure for people that are interested that just shows all the historical points that they're passing as they go through that race, just for fun. But anyway, um, you know, part of, the race goes up Cathedral Avenue, and so it, um, goes into a very pretty part of the village and a little bit of Garden City. And then you turn and come down Franklin, and there's that very sharp visual contrast. And when you come up, yeah, you come on down, um, Atlantic, and then you go up Franklin, and then you come down Main. And walking up Franklin, um, I, I just felt like, it seems like a lot of those. And walking up Franklin, um, I, I just felt like, it seems like a lot of those, um, dealerships could do some landscaping, and it would just, yeah, help make things look better like Lincoln Continental does. They've got trees out there, and they've got pots with, with greenery and so on, and it just dresses it up. And, um, the others, um, just, well, it'd be very, very plain. And also on Main Street, where a lot of cars are parked in lots, the sidewalks are very cracked. I wonder if it's not the business owners' responsibility to deal with the sidewalk the same as it is the homeowners who are paying all these taxes. And it just seems to me that those would be fairly simple things that if they could be effective, would, um, help out a lot with the appearance of the village. That's my question, yeah.
Your points all taken, and we'll work on that. The idea of the car dealerships making the more attractive support. I'd love to see them all name themselves Hemstead instead of Garden City.
Seriously.
And they're here in the village of Hemstead, and we'll see if we can't get them to accommodate qualities in that regard. Thank you. I'm Reggie Lucas.
Yeah, there was a question. Are the sidewalks the responsibilities of a business district?
No, the sidewalk's the responsibility of the landlord, the owner's.
Of the owner's.
That requires, again, you can get a ticket, they don't do it correct. I just, says my...
Good evening, Mayor, trustees.
Good evening.
A couple of weeks ago, we had a shooting by Antioch Church, who was running their parking lot. I'd like an update on that. It was also a suicide this week. I'd like an update on that. Code enforcement. I called up, um, code enforcement today, and, um, I wanted to look at a property on the corner of Butler and Northfield Road, and of course, I didn't know the address. Uh, they said that I couldn't, uh, submit. I think it's a little ridiculous, because, uh, when you send somebody out, they'll be found up to the property. The property is overgrown grass, and it's got a sale sign, and then, uh, you can't miss it. Been on the corner of Butler Place and Northfield Road. Uh, shot squad. I'd like an update on that for the last two weeks. Because every time I called, they said, oh, there's nothing happening. It's gotta be something happening, because I've been getting calls about people hearing shots, and they're not fireworks. I'd like to update on our chief of police, you know, what was, what's happening with them. I'd like to hear questions, what's happening with them. And, uh, I'd like for the, the reschedule, the, uh, community bus tour of Hemstead. One of you can, you know, get that situation done, I'm here, not done. And I'd like to update on the East and Barles. What's the, what's happening, what's going on there? Also, there was two things on the agenda today. Uh, one was chapter nine, and the other was, uh, chapter twenty-four. Can you give me a more in-depth of what did this, you wanna change about these two, uh, codes? Thank you.
Okay. We did indeed have an individual, uh, man who cried at this morning on the booth across the street.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Who did, uh, jump through a death, uh, suicide. She wasn't alive for a while, out of the hospital. With the information known, the rest of it is now still confidential to the community. Shooting by Antioch was bad. Could be a couple more in gangs. Despite the number of shots fired, unfortunately, no one was, was hit. But it's unfair to the neighbors, and we're taking it, of course, seriously, possible. The county's involved, the village, bringing that to a conclusion.
Okay, and the number of shots, it was more than just three or four, right? What were the shots?
Yes, it was. I said that, yeah. As the Olay and Cash, who put the two bars on the, uh, that part, uh, what, uh, the mayor's speaking on it, but I share and discuss that they both have liquor licenses without having gotten the appropriate measure that we are, that, you know, it's a pleasure, and we're gonna do it, uh, in front of, so, we do, the mayor, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Lucas, I've been working very closely, closely with the community, with the, uh, residents on Cully Road. In fact, I was there Saturday, uh, late Saturday. We had, uh, thanks to the police department, we had a man, Mr. Antonio Kelly. Over the weekend, they did a complete sweep there. There was no problem down there this weekend. Uh, and we're in the process, still waiting for, that's how they get back to me, as to when, when they're gonna get a new, uh, license. Okay, well, they, you know, I'm hearing that they use the old thing about not the versatility of a town and city when they get their license. Are they still using that, uh? Well, we did have, I did receive a letter that was sent to, uh, Town Hall instead of Village Hall. They sent it to me however it was written. So, uh, that did happen. They were trying to apply to the town.
We are just, they reiterate, mystified because Cash, well, he came into the office to ask for a liquor license. I told him, I had to go to the state liquor authority, and I was not gonna support the application. State liquor authority wrote me back indicating the things necessary for them to be able to get a liquor license, and one of it was a letter from the mayor giving his approval. And then we gave him that letter, and I told him just the opposite. And yet, they sent another letter several months later, and they obliterated that requirement. I called their attorney, called up the Albany. I had not yet gotten a satisfactory explanation as to why they were allowed to do it. And then they followed up. I gave an Olay license with that a letter as well. So again, we have asked for a meeting. We want an explanation as to how this could possibly happen. We're also going in with a brochures from all the different arrests and problems that they had at those two locations. Serving underage people, fights, noise, all sorts of instances, which would indicate that they should be denied the privilege of serving alcohol. We are supporting the neighbors in that regard, and hopefully, they will, they will honor our request and take the license away.
Okay, um, Chief, so can we have that, please? As fast as possible.
There, there's no change in, in the situation of our chiefs. It's, you met the new assistant chief the last meeting. The other two chiefs were still in place. There is a indictment, and there's no doubt will be, um, maybe, whatever our call, a trial. We await the result, and I'm optimistic that we stay supported. We'll, we'll have the, your chief back in full state.
Uh, code enforcement. Do we have to give a, a pinpoint, you know, address and everything, or something to react?
Use the app.
It's definitely helpful if you let us know the address, and then, uh, anybody who calls me with that regard and calls the trustees, the next form we make is the appropriate department heads that they will react.
The reason why I say that is I gave them on the corner of Butler Place and Northfield Road.
We got a tall grass.
Yeah, and a tall grass, and, uh, you know, mosquitoes was flying around like crazy. You know what I mean? And, uh, they got a sale sign in the front, you know what I mean? So it's very hard to, uh, make a mistake in there. All right, um, the, the bus, uh, sir?
The bus, sir.
Are you scared of the bus yet?
No, I have not.
Well, I, I, you would like to, to rush, I mean?
I'm on it.
Okay, thank you. The next, those two codes I don't wanna change. If you give me some insight on whi- why you want them changed, or whatever.
Madam Attorney, could you be kind of...
Yeah, the code, uh, nine, or chapter nine.
Chapter nine, okay.
The other one, chapter twenty-four?
Okay. Chapter nine is a, um, an amendment to our ethics code. The ethics code currently reads that any complaints of ethics violations within village government, the person is to report the complaint to the village clerk. The village clerk returned it over to the village attorney. The attorney would do an investigation and make a report and recommendation to the board trustees, and they would decide, um, whether there's a substantiated violation, and then handle it from there. That's what the current code reads. The amend, the proposed amendment proposes that a complaint is turned in to the clerk, but it goes to an ethics board. We're creating a board of seven people, a cross-section of Hemstead residents. And to you, trustee, then I'll tell you who the, they'll be appointed by the mayor, subject to trustee approval. One person will be a member of the, a faith-based denomination, you know, the other form? This is, the rest of it's on here. Okay. A member of the faith-based denomination located in Hemstead, a resident of twenty-five years or more, a resident of five years or more, a person who lives in an apartment building with forty or more units, a representative of the P T A from the Hemstead Public Schools. Is that fine? A business owner, a business owner that's had a business in Hemstead for five years or more.
And then someone from the civic that's not an officer.
Thank you. Someone from a civic association that's not an officer. So a cross-section of, um, of village residents will meet and will hear complaints. Sort of like in the city, they have community review boards that review police complaints. So this is gonna be a hybrid, right? So you'll be able to make complaints or discuss issues, um, regarding the entire village government.
All right, we're by chapter twenty-four. Where is the...
Chapter twenty-four is the hearing that we held at the meeting on June fourth. Chapter twenty-four, the changes were, previously, the clerk and the treasurer had indefinite terms of office, right? And they were given civil service protection, and they're not civil service officers. So we changed that to make it consistent with the New York State law and give them terms of office. With regards to, um, the mayor's salary, that part of the code had not been changed probably since before I was born. It said that the mayor trustee's salary was five thousand dollars. I don't imagine it's been five thousand dollars in years. In fact, their salaries are not five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would, I would say if it was five thousand, that'd be good for the community and go out taxes.
So, so we, so we amended...
That's why they made exemption of the, uh, student theater.
So, so we amended that part of the code as well to update it, to make sure it was consistent with what's happening.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to pour it in.